All right. Good evening, citizens and city council. I'll call the November twentieth, twenty twenty-three special meeting of the West Richland City Council to order at six P. M. And before we get started, I'll ask Stephanie if she'd please read the hybrid meeting ground rules and then call roll.
All right. Thank you. Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on your video view and selecting rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit your comments to three minutes. All right. Roll call. Brent Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Fred Brink.
Here.
David Fettow.
Here.
May Hayes.
Here.
Kate Moran.
Present.
John Smart.
Here.
Ken Stoker.
Here.
All right. Thank you, council. And this is our first opportunity for citizens' public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening. If you'd like to provide comments to the city council, go ahead and come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. And again, for items not on the agenda this evening. I see no one in audience, and if there's anybody on the way of virtual star nine, if you're by phone, or raise your virtual hand to be recognized. I see no one virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
And we'll go ahead and move on to four. Counsel, this purpose of the night's special meeting is to receive and evaluate complaints against a public officer. As this is a council-led deliberation and determination, I will recuse myself from this portion of the meeting, and I will turn it over to Mayor Pro Tim Brink. So I will yield my chair to him since the microphone is live all the time. And Jessica, if you'd like to take Mayor Pro Tim Brink's seat.
Good evening, everyone. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to review and evaluate complaints the city has received regarding Councilmember John Smart. I'll begin by asking our city attorney, Ms. Jessica Foltz, to read the complaints to council and to help facilitate council's discussion on this matter. But before I get started, I would kindly ask the audience just to refrain from any affirmation or dissent with regard to the discussion as it takes place tonight. Counselor Foltz, will you please read the staff report?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim Brink, city council members and city staff. The city of Richland, West Richland, excuse me, has received five complaints regarding statements made by councilmember Smart at the city council meeting from November seventh. I will read the complaints and then give some background regarding the code of ethics that has potentially been violated by these comments. The first complaint states, "I am contacting you today to submit a formal complaint against councilmember John Smart. I take my responsibility as a member of the West Richland City Council very seriously. In the coming weeks, council will make a very difficult decision regarding the cannabis text amendment. Although I have yet to finalize my decision, I now feel my ability to vote freely has been compromised. Councilmember Smart's remarks during the November seventh council meeting implied a direct threat against anyone who may have a different opinion than his. Councilmember Smart preaches constantly about our freedoms, and yet he is trying to intimidate council to vote as he would. At one oh nine thirty-four of the November seventh twenty twenty-three council meeting video minutes, councilmember Smart states, quote, "I would be shocked and will take appropriate notice of any council member that violates our community vision and votes for this. That's not going to make any friends for me," end quote. He then goes on to say that he is not threatening anyone, but his words have power and were made in his official capacity as council member and may incite someone to act. Should I now vote in a matter different than his? If my vote is different than his, do I now have to worry about retaliation from councilmember Smart? Will I be subject to retaliation from the twenty-eight citizens in attendance who very loudly celebrated his threats? I don't know exactly what he was trying to convey here, but I find his comments highly inappropriate and extremely concerning, and not in keeping with adopted city council rules of procedure and conduct. Councilmember Smart's comments are in direct opposition to the following West Richland City Council values, guiding principles and operating protocols. Council values: diversity of opinion, integrity, leadership, respect, cooperation, and trust. Council guiding principles: we are respectful and civil in all of our actions. We practice unity, and decisions made by council as a whole are not undermined by individual council members. Though council members are free to publicly and respectfully disagree with a council decision, we strive for cooperation and believe reasonable people can disagree yet still work together productively. We support each other's leadership by encouraging integrity, accountability, and competence. Operating protocols: work issues, not people. Council members are expected to work on issues without personalizing them. Work to build council credibility. Council is most effective when it works as a whole. Individual council members should work to promote credibility and a positive image of the full council. I'm requesting that this issue be dealt with prior to a council vote on this topic. I believe that this behavior demands at minimum a written reprimand, and I believe it rises to the level of censure. The second complaint states, West Richmond Municipal Code two twenty oh two oh, purpose and intent, quote, "The purpose and intent of the commission extends to and encompasses making recommendations to the city council and mayor relative to the orderly physical development and growth of the community," end quote. On August seventeenth, the Planning Commission was asked to consider a text amendment to allow recreational marijuana retail sales in the light industrial zone. An application had been made by an individual for the text amendment. We were not asked to allow marijuana retail sales just to consider a text amendment. We listened to the staff presentation and comments from the public. The staff presentation and public comments were very informative, but let me stress, our purview was not to vote on allowing marijuana retail sales, but just to consider a text amendment. As a member of the West Richland Planning Commission, I take exception to councilmember John Smart's comments at the November seventh twenty twenty-three council meeting concerning the Planning Commission. His comments, quote, "Extremely upset wasn't stopped at the Planning Commission," end quote. Quote, "Extremely disappointed that this didn't get stopped at the Planning Commission," end quote. Quote, "I listen to these meetings, and it's hard for me to believe that that commission is doing its job, at least three of the four," end quote. Quote, "And I will have words about that with the council in the future because as we need to ensure the people that serve on the boards are there for the right reasons," end quote. Those of us who serve on the Planning Commission are there because we believe in the city and its future, and we believe that is the right reason. We are not there to make decisions for the city council but to make recommendations, and in this instance, we did. It is up to the council to make their decisions based on our recommendations. That is a democratic process. I believe Mr. Smart does not understand the process of the Planning Commission, and I take exception to his comments. They were, I believe, rude and uncalled for, and Mr. Chad Utech, Michael Peterson, and I wrote an official apology from John Smart. The third complaint states, "I am writing to express my formal complaint about John Smart's recent comments and actions regarding the pot shop subject. I am deeply concerned about his lack of education on the topic, his lack of understanding of the Planning Commission's role, and his inability to comprehend the results of the pot shop survey. First and foremost, Mr. Smart's comments about the pot shop demonstrate a clear lack of education on the subject. He has shown a complete lack of understanding of the results of the survey and the efforts by the full-time staff to answer Planning Commission comments. I urge him to educate himself on these issues before making any further comments on the matter." Second, Mr. Smart's comments about the Planning Commission as a whole also demonstrate a lack of understanding of its role. The Planning Commission is responsible for making recommendations to the city council on a variety of land use issues, including the location of pot shops. Mr. Smart's comments suggest that he believes the Planning Commission should simply rubber stamp the decisions of the city council, which is not the case. The Planning Commission has an independent responsibility to make recommendations that are in the best interests of the city. Third, Mr. Smart's comments about the results of the pot shop survey demonstrate a complete inability to comprehend the data. The survey showed that a majority of respondents are in favor of allowing pot shops in the city, even though many of them did not attend the public meeting. Mr. Smart's suggestion that the results of the survey are invalid because the people who did not show up to the meeting are not representative of the community is simply wrong. The survey results are valid, and they accurately reflect the views of the community on this issue. Finally, I am deeply concerned about Mr. Smart's attempts to threaten and badger council members who vote on this issue. His statement that he would, quote, "take appropriate notice," end quote, "of any council member who votes for the pot shop" is clearly a threat, and his comments about having words with three planning commissioners who voted for the pot shop are also threatening. Mr. Smart's behavior is unacceptable, and it is a clear violation of the city's values of diversity of opinion, balanced growth, and economic vitality. The third complaint was made by phone to councilman, council, Pro Tim Mayor Brink, excuse me. A summary of that complaint is as follows. On November fifteenth twenty twenty-three, a citizen of West Richland contacted me telephonically regarding comments made by councilmember Smart during the city council meeting on November seventh twenty twenty-three. The citizen described Mr. Smart's comments regarding the upcoming vote on allowing retail cannabis sales within the city as inappropriate, intimidating, and threatening, especially when Mr. Smart stated he would, quote, "take appropriate notice," end quote, "of any council member who voted in support of this request." The citizen was further alarmed at Mr. Smart's comments in which he questioned whether the Planning Commission members were, quote, "doing their job," end quote, and that the city needed to ensure citizens who serve on the Planning Commission and other city boards, quote, "are there for the right reason," end quote. As Mr. Smart also stated, he would speak to council regarding his concern in the future. The citizen was very concerned Mr. Smart believes only like-minded individuals with views and opinions similar to his own should be appointed to such roles. The final complaint was received by email earlier today and reads as follows. "Good afternoon, all. I am writing to express my concern with this open meeting considering the sanction of sanctioning of Councilman John Smart. I was absolutely taken aback when I heard Councilman Smart openly threaten his fellow council members in the meeting of November. Mr. Smart, when you make a threat and then use verbal gymnastics to try to cover your tracks, it's called gaslighting. I was also saddened to see a large number of supporters cheering his threats. I administrate a very large social media group in which issues pertaining to our city are discussed daily. In this group, there is vigorous diversity of thought and expression. We have rules governing our discourses with one another. Civility must be upheld, or the democracy we all hold dear breaks down. I am doing my part, Mr. Smart, in trying to heal the wounds of a divided community. I ask that you do yours. I am also concerned that Councilman Smart is on a path to subjecting the city and its citizens to a lawsuit for slander and libel. We have only to look at the city of Richland recently to see the financial consequences of what a recall would entail. Please take this into consideration, Councilman Smart, as you express your opinions in upcoming meetings. Lastly, I am respectfully requesting that Councilman Smart voluntarily issue a verbal and written apology to the citizens of West Richland and his fellow council members. Although you have compromised your credibility with this constituent, Mr. Smart, I also believe that mistakes can be rectified and relationships can be reconciled. Any more serious discipline should be reserved for future infractions." After the city received these complaints, I reviewed them at the request of Mayor Pro Tim Brink to review whether the allegations were sufficient for a potential violation of the code, essentially that there was any allegation that could be found to be a violation. I relayed to Mayor Pro Tim Brink that I believed that there was at least a sufficient basis for council to consider these complaints. Per the adopted council code of conduct, city staff for that reason has brought this before the council to evaluate the complaints. Councilmember Smart was notified of the complaints and given the option to have the discussion in executive session, but opted to hold the discussion in an open public session for transparency. The council has power under general state law to impose punishment on its members short of removal from office for violation of state law or council rules. Findings that a council member has violated adopted council operating protocols, rules, or ethics shall be determined by a majority vote of the council. The process for this action shall be consistent with adopted council procedures. If the council determines that an investigation is required in order to determine a finding, the council shall well-appropriate follow generally accepted current city of which West Richland practices in conducting personnel investigations. Imposing sanctions for violation of operating protocols, rules, or ethics shall be determined by a majority vote of the council. The process for this action shall be consistent with adopted council procedures. Consequences and sanctions could include and range between a verbal admonition, a written reprimand, censure, or removal of council member from council committee chair positions or committee memberships, or removal of intergovernmental duties. The council shall consider the intent, risk, and severity of the violation to determine the appropriate level of sanction or punishment. Additional consequences may include leadership development. The council member in question may spend time with the mayor or human resources staff to develop leadership skills and/or develop a corrective action plan that is mutually agreed upon. If a council member is believed to have violated state law, any individual council member may choose to refer the alleged violation to the Benton County Prosecutor's Office for appropriate action. As I stated, these five complaints are being presented to the city council this evening for evaluation as to whether councilmember Smart's comments violated the West Richland City Council rules of procedure and conduct, and if so, whether any sanctions should be issued. As stated above, an affirmative finding on either of those questions would require a majority vote of the remaining council members, aside from Mr. Smart. If it is determined through discussion that the council wishes to move forward with a formal vote, the council should identify what specific conduct or statements are believed to have violated the code of conduct, which sections of the code of conduct are believed to have been violated, and the proposed sanction to be imposed. Staff will then prepare and provide a resolution memorializing council's direction and present it at the December fifth twenty twenty-three city council meeting for council action. So just to be clear, there will be no vote tonight on whether there has been a violation of the code or whether sanctions are appropriate. The appropriate motion, if council wishes to move forward to take a formal vote on that, would be to move to direct city staff to prepare a resolution censuring councilmember Smart for violating specific sections of the code based on specific statements. One additional reminder, this discussion is obviously very closely tied to the cannabis tax amendment that is noticed to be voted on tomorrow evening. It is not noticed for tonight, so we need to keep our comments away from that subject. If in council discussion we start to get towards discussing the cannabis tax amendment, I will interject and get us back on track. Thank you.
Yes, right. I'll have to push the button. Thank you, Counselor Foltz. At this time, I'd like to turn to Councilmember Smart to give you time to speak to the complaints. I kindly request that you be briefed, that you be on point, and pertain to the comments that you made and any statements you wish to make in regard to your views. Mr. Smart?
Thank you, Councilman, Council Pro Tim, Mayor Pro Tim, sorry, Brink, still, even though you're in a different seat. Really, I, there's a lot of things I could say, but I'm going to choose to simply correct a misquoted speech on the third complaint where plaintiff, I believe, who's unnamed, by the way, I don't know who made these complaints, at least on two of them. Says, let's see. The actual speech that I made is, I will have words about that with counsel in the future because we need to ensure that the people that serve on these boards are there for the right reason. And what was said in the complaint was that I would have words with the planning commissioners, which was misquoted. So I'll make that clear. Other than that, I would I'm sorry, I wasn't pressing the button. Oh, man. Hopefully I came over. Okay, let me repeat this. There's a misquoted speech in complaint number three, which says, "I will have words with counsel in the future because we need to ensure that people that serve on these boards are there for the right reason." That's what I said. What was said in the complaint was that I would have words with three planning commissioners who worked for the pot shop. Anyway, that's, that's not, that was a, that needs to be corrected. And then I am mentioning that I believe that if you look at the, it's, it's one thing to repeat, and I believe other than that misquote, my quotes are accurately stated. I think that there is, they've gone beyond that. There's innuendo of of leading threats. There's innuendo of being uneducated, both in how the planning commission works and, and how statistics work. And I want to mention the words libel, defamation, and innuendo. If you don't know the definition of those, I'll be happy to recite them, but I think you all know what that means. I, that's, that's really the extent of my comments. Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smart. I will open it up for discussion among council. Councilmember Smart would request that unless a question is directed to you specifically, that you do not make comments with regard to our discussion.
Understood. Thank you.
Counsel. Councilmember Bloom.
I've prepared a couple of comments. I'd like to address the two complaints coming from the Planning Commission. The second complaint in the packet appears to be from a member of the Planning Commission questioning a statement relative to the issue not being stopped at the Planning Commission level. I agree with the author relative to the statutory language cited. That is their mind. They do not deserve the negative comments, and I agree. It is not up to the Planning Commission to vote on the question of allowing or not allowing sale of marijuana in this city. It is clearly a council decision. It is unfortunate that the mayor and the city staff put the Planning Commission in an inappropriate situation where the cart was placed before the horse. Per city, per the city website, planning in West Richland is a community responsibility, and one of the Planning Commission's key functions is to obtain public input through public hearings and other methods prior to making recommendations. Given the tremendous public comic expressing the displeasure with the horse marijuana sales, the Planning Commission should have demanded that the council officially address the horse before they decided on the parking spot and color scheme of the cart. The third complaint expressed displeasure with Mr. Mark Smart's comments about the Planning Commission, and as I stated above, they likely do not deserve. Unfortunately, many of the comments related to the survey results seem to imply the Planning Commission took the flawed survey as official public comment, when in fact it is not the case. I do not know if the Planning Commission was aware of the issue of the hundred and twenty suspicious responses, of which ninety were thrown out, rejected. And as I previously said, given the tremendous official public comment there expressed displeasure with allowing the sale of marijuana, the Planning Commission should have demanded the council officially address the issue before they took on the issue. Towards that end, Mr. Smart's comment relative to procedural issues of a businessman asking for an ordinance change to prevent unnecessary burden on the Planning Commission, which is volunteers that I do appreciate their service. I would request that we change the process of a ordinance change to require council approval prior to being forward to the Planning Commission. In conclusion, I believe Mr. Smart and Mayor Gary owe the Planning Commission an apology for putting them through this. Relative to the first complaint from, I assume, a council member. The complaint ignores what was said prior to the statements referring to the overwhelming public comment given at the public hearing. The, quote, "This is an obvious overwhelming request from our community. I would be shocked and will take appropriate notice of council members that violate our community vision and votes for this. That's not going to make any friends for me." I do not see this as a personal attack, but rather a statement of the obvious that ignoring public comment is not going to win any council members any friends with the public. May I point out that the flawed survey represents the silent, some may point to the flawed survey as representing the silent majority who support a pot shop. But as pointed out in the presentation, Mr. Ron Gailey of the survey, the same thing that goes for cannabis sales, he was referring back to fireworks. So there are only strongly supporting or somewhat supporting, and there are those who strongly oppose or somewhat opposed. As he pointed out, the results, the opposition was higher among those fifty-five and older and favored with those under thirty-five. It should be noted that in the past sixty percent of the voters of West Richland off-year elections are overs fifty-five.
Councilman Bloom, we need to try to avoid talking about the cannabis tax amendment. It's not noticed for this evening. So if you could focus your comments on the complaints and whether there's a potential violation.
Well, I, I was getting to the complaint of not making friends. The, the, the question is not making friends by ignoring public comment. That's my point. And so I do believe Mr. Smart has demonstrated his belief in some of the most important council values of honesty and candor, personal accountability, public input, and integrity. I believe he has shown integrity in expressing his opinion unlike those who not express an opinion. He has shown leadership in highlighting flaws in the process, which has resulted in a great deal of energy and effort being expended on the issue that should have been resolved at the council level.
Thank you, Councilmember Bloom. I will just take a moment and offer my comments with regard to the allegations of made by various citizens. We're very happy if we get two or three people showing up at a council meeting. And we have had dozens of individuals show up at recent council meetings. What concerns me, similar to when we're pleased to have just a few council members show up, excuse me, a few citizens show up, is that we had five citizens that took the time to lodge what they believe is inappropriate conduct through words by Councilmember Smart. So I'm concerned from that standpoint that five citizens speaking out on a subject to me is somewhat significant. So while perhaps malintent was not desired, it was received by several citizens of our city. So that does concern me. And I think at a minimum, an apology, both verbal and written, is due because of the way the words were received by citizens, not necessarily the intent on the part of Mr. Smart. But we all know that perceptions can become reality. And if someone perceives an individual is not being open-minded, an individual is not being focused in looking at things objectively, that causes me concern. So at that point, that is what I believe is appropriate action. Councilmember Moran, you have your card up.
Thank you, yes. I didn't have anything specifically planned, but I did want to speak at least a little bit about this. I personally feel that at first, when I heard what was said by Councilmember Smart, that I, I heard the frustration at council, at staff, at Planning Commission, and I, well, actually, first, let me go back to say that I do appreciate that Councilmember Smart was informed of the complaints and was able to decide whether it would be a closed or a public hearing, and I do appreciate the transparency of that. So thank you for that. I think that when we look at what was said, that it can, as it has been, be seen as threats. Now, personally, for me, I don't know if it's fair or otherwise, but I feel that as an elected official I don't know if it's fair or otherwise, but I feel that as an elected official, I almost kind of invite that because I know that could be the situation. However, when it comes to talking about Planning Commission and about staff, that is different. The Planning Commission and our boards and commissions are volunteer. The people are volunteering their time, and I think it is disrespectful to assume bad intent on volunteers who are doing the job in front of them and not getting paid for it and spending their free time in doing so. I think that with the fact that all of us as elected representatives of our community in our representative republic that we live in, I think that it is important to have differing ideas, and I appreciate the differing ideas that we have. But it starts to become a chilled environment when we say things that people could consider threats. I am not saying it is a threat, but people have thought that it sounded like one, and that's concerning. The having words with someone, to me, that also sounds like a threat. I feel like with this being the first time where we are bringing these complaints forward, that perhaps censorship isn't the way to go. However, I do feel as if an apology, at the very least, to Planning Commission and staff should be, as Mayor Protem Bloom stated, a verbal and written apology. I do think that it's important. Again, we're not all rainbows and unicorns. But there is a line, and I feel that at this point, the line had been crossed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moran. Councilmember Fettow.
Thank you, Mr. Protem. I just have a prepared statement. I find Mr. Smart's comments be highly inappropriate, inflammatory, and extremely upsetting. There is no place on this council for anyone who thinks they can hit a retaliation to sway a vote. These comments are not in keeping with the values of the elected body. I am in favor of council censure and believe Mr. Smart needs to publicly apologize to the Planning Commission members, city staff, city council, the citizens of West Richland. This apology needs to be both writing and verbalized prior to tomorrow's city's council meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayes, do you have any comments you wish to make? And then I'll turn to you, Councilmember Stoker.
I was very disturbed by the comments that Councilmember made the night of the meeting. I went home and I was like, okay, I've been threatened that I have to vote a certain way or else. And and I think that threat by all different council people. I'm a single woman. I live by myself. I don't know what this other group is gonna do. And he's threatening me, so are these people, because everybody knows where everybody lives. I took it very personal, and it was very upsetting to me that he threatened us. And I I think that he definitely needs to apologize, not only to council, but to the Planning Commission and to the public for his words. But because it hits people differently, and it really affected me. And and I was like, do I have the right to say I'm really scared about this or what's gonna happen? So I was very disturbed with the whole process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayes. Councilmember Stoker, do you have comments?
I don't have any that are prepared. Sorry, being on travel, I it's not easy to put something together, but I guess I will admit a few things. I I will say I was a bit shocked, probably not to the same regard as others, especially those who submitted their complaints. But to me, I certainly view it at a minimum of overzealous hyperbole. But and and I say that with no intentions of discounting anybody else's reception of those words. All I can say is I was shocked. I kind of do expect an apology, as like everyone else does, and that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stoker. Council, we have had discussion. If there is no other discussion at this point, it is time for a motion. I would ask council members, a council member to make a motion on what action they believe is appropriate, and we will go through the second process and take a vote. Do I have a motion?
I move to direct city staff to prepare a resolution censoring Councilmember John Smart for violating West Richland City Council values, guiding principles, and operating protocols, sections sections that govern values, principles that guide council, and working as a team, operating protocols.
I have
by his conduct or
Sorry. No, go ahead.
Conduct or statements made during the number seven city council meeting. The resolution should impose the following sanctions at minimum written reprimand, council censors.
There is a motion. Do I have a second for the motion that Councilmember Fettow put forward?
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. I will just ask. Did you take notes on summary of what Councilmember Fettow has asked for, just if you don't mind, just?
The motion that has been moved and seconded is to direct staff to prepare a resolution finding that Councilwoman Smart violated the West Richland Municipal Council Rules and Operating Procedures, Sections Regarding Values, Operating Protocols. Was there one more thing? And principles, and that the imposed, that the resolution imposes a proposed sanction of written reprimand and council censure.
You have a motion and a second.
I have a point of information.
Go ahead, Councilmember Moran.
My point of information is because this is a special meeting, and there is nothing that specifically states there is a motion in the agenda, I just want to verify very clearly that we are not violating the Open Public Meeting Act by having that motion. It the the agenda specifically doesn't say it. The packet does mention a motion, but not the agenda.
Correct. However, according to the legal counsel that we have received, our goal tonight is to put forward a motion to direct staff to take appropriate action. We are not voting on final action. We are voting on preparing a motion. Is that a correct summary?
That's correct. We are not taking any final action on this, whether a violation occurred or whether a sanction is going to be imposed at this meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Councilmember Bloom.
Well, are we gonna have a discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
We just haven't. I wanted I wanted to get it reviewed so everyone knew what we were talking about.
I I would, I believe from the discussion is it would be appropriate to modify the the proposed motion, which right now, the way it's worded, I would vote against. Modify the motion to direct staff to make to prepare multiple motions with a variety of things, because right now, most of the most of the council members that address have expressed want for a apology, written, et cetera, not necessarily sanctioned. And so I I would I would suggest that we we direct staff to prepare a a number of
Varying varying degrees.
All right, that I mean, but we have a motion on the floor. I just wanted to bring it up that. You know, that was my point.
Thank you. Let me hear from Councilmember Stoker. He has his hand raised. Please, Councilmember Stoker.
Yes, well, I think mine kind of goes along with Councilmember Bloom's because I'm concerned with the fact that, you know, having city staff provide potentially the only form of sanctions or censure. It seems awfully narrow in scope and should be a bit more flexible, allowing us to investigate or at least have the option to consider the different options that are available to us in this situation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Stoker. I will voice my thoughts as well. I actually do like the suggestion made by Councilmember Bloom so that we prepare perhaps one motion or one recommendation for staff to prepare a motion, which includes apologies, perhaps a second one, which goes to a higher level for censure. And that gives us a little bit of time to contemplate it before we take final action. But I do believe that some action must be taken. I I do feel strongly about this simply because we are professionals. We are the individuals that are charged by our voters to act professionally and without malice in our judgment and our decision-making. And anytime that a citizen can 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 perceive perhaps that that is not being done, and again, I'm talking perceptions, not intent. We need to correct that. That's my opinion. Councilmember Fettow.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the procedures. I'm I'm okay with amending the motion. However, I'm not prepared to hear this text amendment tomorrow if punishment or any type of verbal or written apology is not issued prior to tomorrow's meeting.
Councilmember Moran.
I just want to make sure that I understand. So with the motion, would it be something that would be just for a quest requesting the apology prior to tomorrow's meeting? Is that what the meeting was, what the motion was stating? It was a bit long, so it was kind of hard for me to follow.
Well, any action that we take will not become official until the next council meeting. However, I can't speak for Councilmember Smart. If he chose to make an apology at tomorrow night's meeting, that would be his choice. But any action that we take will not be finally voted on until December fifth. But Councilmember Fettow, I I heard you perhaps considering to amend your motion. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'd be willing to amend to match, you know, the sentiments of Councilmember Bloom and Councilmember Stoker.
So are you moving to amend the motion accordingly?
Yes.
You have a second on
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Stoker.
The point of information, what is then the motion?
We will, we will reiterate that for everyone. So as I understand it now, we are separating into two separate recommendations for staff. One to recommend an apology and a second to recommend staff prepare a letter of censure. Is that your intent, Mr. Fettow, with this revised motion?
Bear with me a second. No, actually, I'm sorry. I think an apology should be included no matter what city staff decides. And as I said, I will not hear the cannabis tax amendment tomorrow unless that something happens prior to tomorrow's meeting. As far as the motion goes, if we want to separate out the reprimand versus censure, I'd be okay separating those two out. However, the apology needs to be there no matter what way we go. A public apology to Planning Commission, this council, the city staff, and the citizens are required no matter what we go forward with.
Thank you. Yep. So we, I I think we can move to a vote on directing city staff to prepare. Yeah, that's what we're gonna do. So the first motion that Councilmember Fettow put forward, he has agreed to amend it. So I think to be correct, we have to vote to remove that from the table. Is that correct, Stephanie?
So you would vote to amend the motion, and then you would vote to for the motion as amended if that passes?
Well, I will, if there's no more discussion, I'll call for a vote to amend the motion.
Well, I think I think the question that that was asked was what is the motion? So that's why I'm I'm let's could 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 Councilmember Fettow just remove his withdraw his motion, and then let's put a clean motion out there?
Sorry.
All right. I'll call for a vote to remove Mr. Fettow's motion from the table.
A point of no, we can't do
Excuse me, to amend it, to amend it. We'll work our way through this.
Okay. So then, just a point of information, what we are currently doing is voting to approve the amendment? Is that correct?
Amended motion.
No, we we just have to approve the amendment first, correct? Yes. So that is what this vote is for, is to amend the motion. And what is the full amended motion saying?
Mayor Protem Brink.
Yes.
So the original motion was presented by Councilmember Fettow, and it was to direct staff to prepare prepare a resolution regarding the violations of the council values, principles, and operating protocols, including censure and reprimand. And then it was proposed to amend that motion to allow staff to prepare two separate resolutions, both of them including an apology to the Planning Commission staff, council, and public. One, I I believe I understood to be just including an apology, and one including what was included in the original motion. So the amended, the amendment was to prepare two resolutions. And then the defining information of one would be for a written and public apology, and the other would be from what the original motion was for.
That correct?
So to kind of comb out some of the tangles here. So correct me if I'm wrong, but the amended motion that we are approving to amend to be just approving the amendment itself is a move to direct city staff to prepare two resolutions regarding violations of dot, 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 including censure and reprimand, and another for an apology. Is that accurate?
That is what I heard. Is that what you heard?
So both resolutions would include the apology, and one would basically expand on that to have the reprimand and sanction.
Correct.
So are we ready to vote on that?
To approve those changes? Yes.
All right.
To approve that resolution, not the change, the resolution.
So this initial So this initial, this initial vote would be to amend the original motion. So if you wish to have two resolutions prepared, you would vote in the affirmative for the amendment. And if that passes, then there will be a second vote, which would approve the motion as amended. So you would be approving both staff to prepare both resolutions.
We good? All right. So I call for a vote to amend the resolutions. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any dissent? Motion passes. Now for part two. So we have the, we need a motion now. No, we have the motion, that's right. So now we need to vote on the amended to prepare the two staff actions. All right. All in favor, please say aye. That was an aye, Mr. Stoker.
Correct.
Any opposed? Say nay.
Nay.
Right. Motion carries. Thank you, council. At this time, going to let Mayor Gary come back up here to continue with our meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Brink. And yes, there's your water. Appreciate that. Hey, council, we've moved to the second opportunity for citizen public comment. And if anyone would like to address council, please come to the podium, state your name and address for record. And please limit your comments to three minutes and reminding everyone that there's no conversation back and forth from council to the podium. So if you'd like to address council, please come to the podium. Okay, I see no one in house. If we have anybody by virtual or phone, star nine by phone, or raise your virtual hand to be recognized by clerk. I see no one virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
Very good. So with that, council, that will conclude our meeting for this evening, and I will adjourn at six fifty-two. Thank you very much.